Selectman meeting for Monday, October 5th, 2020. And this is a Zoom meeting, which it is being recorded. First order of business is the Fledge of Allegiance. Let me see if I can get my flag in there. There we go. Charles, would you please?
Okay. You got that phone?
Yeah, I just set off the ringer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Charles. Item two, public forums. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address us in public forum? I see Jerry's here. Jerry, you're muted. If you unmute. There we go. Good morning, Jerry.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I just have a quick comment to make about the Timberland Preserve Management Plan. And I just wanted to say that that was started when I was chairman of the Conservation Commission about 20 years ago. And plan was for the increasing the biodiversity and resilience of the timberlands. Because it was in pretty bad shape at that point. A sort of a harvest had been done, which took all the good trees and left a lot of bad trees. And it's been very successful since then. So I just wanted to endorse continuing and improving the Timberlands Management Plan.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it. Just a quick question. With drought conditions, and I know this isn't the West Coast, right? But with the drought conditions, are we ever at risk for, you know, serious forest fires in the timberlands? And does this preservation and management plan help to avoid those kind of situations?
Yes, I think, you know, Kevin might address that as well. But I would say that we should definitely speak to what the, what would we say? The Farucci and Willicki, when they start to make the plan and survey the timberlands, to make some suggestions about possible control. You know, if there's a lot of dead fall on the ground and there's a big drought, then of course there's chances of, you know, a forest fire. So they should, they should really be able to comment on that.
Okay. Thank you. We'll have Kevin talk about that at the appropriate time. Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. And by the way, I think you are, you may be the first member of the public to comment at one of our meetings since we went to the Zoom meeting methodology. So thank, you have, you have that, I believe you have that distinction now.
Jerry's always been very high tech.
I love it. Okay. Item three, and that is to approve the minutes of the September 21st, 2020 regular meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any comments, questions, changes, additions, deletions, et cetera? I had none.
Good to go.
Good to go. Follow the question. All in favor, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haberda.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
I need to abstain, I wasn't present.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
And Selectman Hoy is also an aye, that motion carries. Item four, Police Chief Butch Hyatt. Good morning, Butch. Item one, discuss and take possible action on purchase of equipment from WatchGuard Video. I think we're doing this because it's, we did not get bids, it's a sole source. But Butch, you want to just talk about what it is?
Yeah, I was, wasn't sure on this, but it's, this is not a purchase, this is a service contract.
Yep.
It's a budgeted item. We budget it every year. I can go through each one of the things on the, on the lines if that will be helpful. But it's, it's warranties for our cameras. We, we warranty the cameras for, I think, up to five years. And because we get cameras at different times, some of them have different, are budgeted at different amounts. Like the first one in line is the fifth year on two of the cameras.
Okay.
Couple lines down is the second year on some of the cameras, because they're only two years old. The software protection is the evidence library for all of our equipment. That's the software that makes it work. The 24 is for the body cameras, the 24 warranties for those cameras as well. And then the maintenance is on the warranty maintenance on the system. So it is not a purchase, it's a service contract.
Got it. All right.
I mean, I'll move it, but to the chief's point, why are, why is it ahead of, before us?
I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that Vicki did not realize this was a service contract. And in fact, it was, I mean, it was a, she didn't realize it was a service contract and thought it was a purchase without the backup documentation.
So do we want to move it?
I don't think, I don't think we need to move it.
Okay.
So I'll take that. Report, in other words.
Yes. All right, Butch, thank you very much. Obviously, you got it. Okay, item five, Environmental Planner Kevin McGee. Item one is to remove from the table and take possible action on recommendation from the Conservation Commission to contract with Farucci and Willicki LLC. They are forestry and land management consultants to update the Timberland Preserve Management Plan. Kevin, you want to just talk to this a little bit?
Sure. Back in, beginning April, I came in front of the board to presentation of this for the, for Farucci and Willicki to do the management plan for the, for the Timberland Preserve. Conservation Commission has, came up an RFP at the time, made it out. And we only got one vendor interested at that time. That vendor told us at that time that they would hold the price. I confirmed that with them, that they are holding the price that we agreed upon, that The board at that time was not sure of the expenses for COVID and stuff, so decided to hold off on major expenses. So this was one of the ones that I held off at the time. Conservation Commission would like to get moving forward with this program. So we're back in front of you to see if we can hire this consultant to do the Timberland Management Plan. The last plan was done back in the 90s, so a lot, portions of it have been done. Just looking to have that updated due to, one, evaluate the past practices. And there's been new theories in forest management since that plan came out. So they want to have a more of a management plan, have a timberland, timber plan for the property, similar to these reserve plan, which looked at the whole property holistically versus just looking at the timber value, value of the property.
Gotcha. Okay. Question, so Mary Jane, we had money reserved or carried in force on this? You're muted.
Sorry, once again, too many screens. Yes, Kevin and I have already been in touch and we're, we're good to go.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
Mary Jane.
Sorry, go ahead, Sandy.
Mary Jane, so we're good to go. So the money is just, was in, it's encumbered from 1920 budget?
I forgot which budgets, but we have a couple of options for the monies. We did set aside money specifically for this project, yes, from other budgets.
Hopefully the 2020 budget, but.
Yeah.
Well, that ties into my question, which is, is there any, any user fees associated with anything with these woodlands? I mean, is there any income that comes in? Is there, is there a dedicated endowment or anything? I mean, what do we do to sort of protect the resource other than general funds, if anything?
The property is general funds, a lot of stuff happens through the, any major work. Part of the reason of the cell fire, self tower thing is for the money to help with open space and open space acquisitions there. So besides that, it's budgetary funding, which pays for our programs, just like other departments have.
Okay. I got it. I mean, I got it. It's just interesting, it's an important resource and it's good. I forgot about the self tower. That's a good example of sort of a dedicated satellite.
Kevin, can you, can you remind me when the last time we had a plan in place for the timberlands?
It was back in the 90s.
Okay, so it's 20, 30 years.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, do we have, do we have a plan that includes all of our properties, reserve, timberlands and any other?
There's, the easier a reserve has, when we've got that property.
Okay, so is there overlap when we do individual ones? Or is there anybody that's looking at town open space properties holistically?
We haven't had one really done holistically. I mean, I know the Land Trust sometimes has a bigger encompassing document than there's smaller specific plans for each piece there.
Okay.
We're kind of hoping that, like I said, they can use these for reserves, a lot of information from that to kind of start making more of a holistic view. But each property is somewhat different.
Based on, based on a little bit where we are, you know, as far as tax receipts and where we stand with this pandemic, I mean, and why I asked that, I was one of us that asked, you know, that we hold off last time on this. I'll move this now going forward. I would ask whether it be the Conservation Commission or, or what other, you know, group we have, you know, when we talked about the town plan and Gary was talking about facilities and everything, part of our discussion was the communication between commissions and groups and everything. And I think in overall, I'm not saying oversight, but some general oversight of, I don't know, on open space properties in particular, in coordination with the Land Trust, would be an example of what we talked about during Gary's presentation of getting the commissions aligned and where we're going forward and everything. But I'll move this at this point in time anyway. But if we could talk to the Conservation Commissioner, maybe Matt, you can, you can have some overall administrative input in, and taking a look at all of our properties holistically, that would be part of my recommendation.
Sure, we'd be, we'll be happy to do that, have those conversations with the Conservation Commission. Charles, is, is the idea here intention to put together a plan for further, further stewardship, you know, buying additional open space, management of?
No, I don't have anything that's specific. I just, you know, I remember in, in Gary's presentation, there was conversation about coordination between commissions and information and that type of thing. And I just simply think that what I've just pointed out is an example of, of the need for that. It's simple as that. I want to move forward with the Timberlands Management. I think we have responsibility to maintain our open space properties. You know, like you said, even fires or land management, or Jerry was talking about, we harvested the good trees. Well, what defines good trees? Is it just, you know, firewood and taking out the trees that are marketable? Or is it good, you know, as far as ecologically, like, you know, with these ash bores and all the ash trees that we've lost and before, what, you know? I, I do think managing the forests is a responsibility of ownership. I know the Water Authority that I'm on that board, we take it very seriously because it's watershed property, obviously. So that's why I want to move this forward at this point in time. I think, I think we're doing okay financially, and that's why I asked that we postponed it last night, but I'm prepared to move forward at this point. But I do think to Gary's committee's point, that, that this would be an example of how committees and commissions could be better informed and coordinated with each other.
Good.
Charles, on one point there is, I've been in, I'm in constant contact with the Land Trust with basically properties that we share easements with and adjoining properties with them. So I'm in contact with them on that part there. As part of the plan, there's going to be public hearings with the public input of, according to the activities there. So Land Trust and other commissions and groups in town would have the ability to come speak and help frame the plan there. So that's all part of the, the process.
So you had a comment, Sue? You know, to formalize it a little bit more, you know, I know that, you know, we're talking about administrative tasks and things like that. So, but I don't want to over, you know, over manage, but I just want to point it out that I think it'd be important.
Good, thanks, Charles. Sue, you had a comment?
I did want to comment. Six months ago, we were so apprehensive about the financial future over the, the coming months, but I don't think anybody foresaw the expanded use of all the trail systems in town. That's really been such a mental health break for everybody in town to use these trails. And I think it's especially important now to continue with this plan. I'll second it.
Thank you.
And Sue, that's a great, great point, Charlie, of the finances, you know, to be coordinated. So I agree with everything you guys said, but I had a question specifically about the ash trees, which is more current. I mean, 10 years ago, it was the hemlocks down the west woods especially. There was literally danger of limbs falling. And is there any, is, is part of this trying to maintain sort of safety, making sure that, to the extent that there are things that are potentially dangerous, going to get cleared out of the rest?
That'll be part of the evaluation. I mean, we have our land stewards, pre-part timers, which walk through the trails on a regular basis, looking for hazards. We really don't fall trees too much in the woods there because of additional hazards to one, our employees and the risk to them versus the risk of trees falling in general. So we do, like I said, do clean up the trails and stuff and do evaluate. One thing I did says on a conference call, a seminar last Wednesday regarding open space and tree laws and stuff, and one thing was recommended during that presentation was notes at the beginning of the trails and the kiosk, saying that you're in a natural environment and there's hazards which are involved with that environment you're in. So as you're going in, you're aware that you're potentially, things could happen to you, but it's just part of the natural environment that you're in.
Yeah.
You start controlling things too much, then you actually open yourself up for greater risk.
One thing that I noted in the cover letter from Farucci and Willicki, even though this is designed specifically for one, one piece of our property, one, one, one piece of the puzzle, it does say, it reads, helping landowners understand their land and providing them with potential management options to help them achieve their ownership goals. So I'm assuming what the recommendations we get out of this might be applicable and could be, could be used on some of the other pieces of property, Kevin. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
That's a fair assessment, yeah. Definitely is. I mean, the only thing different would be probably the tree inventory, vegetation inventory, which would be different in the back. But a lot of times, the use recommendations probably are, is standard throughout properties.
Good. Okay, well, we've got a, it's been moved, it's a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haberda.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye, that motion carries. Thank you. At this point, can I, I'd like to add into the agenda, new item, item, and we'll call this item number six, and everything moves down one beyond that. And that is some action related to Long Hill Estates East to recommend to planning and zoning that we accept the open space, which we worked on several months ago, and end this at a town meeting. Is there a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make that.
And that sounds like a second. Call the question, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haberda.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Kevin, this is yours as well.
Sorry, catching my call, I just missed there. So we are looking for the, as part of the open space approval of the subdivision for Long Hill Estates East, looking as part of it, there's 52 acres of land that's set aside for open space, which back in June, the Board of Selectmen approved the recommendation of planning and zoning that the town accept this. Recently, Vigilati Construction, the developers for that subdivision, have transferred title and it's in their possession. In order for them to start moving forward with a lot of their activities, the open space needs to be transferred into the town's hands. So it's protected from Vigilati from expanding beyond their limits of approval into that open space to help maintain that area or help protect that area as being protected open space.
Gotcha. Apropos of our conversation a minute or two ago, in terms of overall land management, as open space, this gives us the opportunity to have passive recreation on that, if I'm not mistaken, Kevin?
Correct. It's, yeah, passive recreation as part of the planning and zoning special permit approval for the open space subdivision. There was a condition made by the Planning and Zoning Commission that it only, only be for passive recreation. Make sure that as part of any deeds that, that reference is made to it.
Wonderful. Good. So there are a couple of items that we need to do here. One is to Senate, Senate recommend, recommend to the planning and zoning that we accept the open space. Is that correct?
No, we done, we did that to planning and zoning, it's just now just to set a town meeting.
Set the town meeting?
Just need to set the town meeting. We, you did do planning and zoning for all that. The subdivision plans have been filed in the land records. So it's just a town meeting to approve acceptance of it, and then we can work with the transferred deeds.
Got it. All right. Tracy, how much, what do we need for notification because of, for, for the press?
If I put it, we need five days. So if you want to have it next week, I can put it in the register. If you want to wait until the next meeting, we can put it in the courier. So it's up to you.
Let's do it the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
And we're only picking up three or four days because next Monday would be a holiday anyway. So, yeah. So let's, let's set the meeting date of the, what is it, the 19th?
19th.
Yeah.
The 19th. Excellent. Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
Definitely, Tracy, the more details.
So is the meeting, the meeting's not going to start earlier, we're just going to do it at 8:30?
You'll do it earlier. We can do the town meeting at 8:15 and then you can start later at 8:30.
I just, I just want to be on time.
Yeah, I have, I have an 11 o'clock on that day, so I don't know what the agenda looks like, nobody does at this point, but just so, 8:15 is, is good.
Would be preferable, yeah. You got it. Okay. All right, item number seven, Green Committee, Jerry Silver, who's with us here. Item one, segment one is to remove from table and take possible action on a policy regarding the placement of privately donated monuments, markers, plaques, benches and memorials on the town green as recommended by the Green Committee. We saw, this sort of fell along the wayside. We had started down this path, got the recommendations. So Jerry, is there anything you want to talk about with this?
Yes, and thank you. If you hear some strange noises, we have people up at our roof starting to replace the roof. So this is where all the banging is at. So I just wanted to say that the Guilford Green Committee was getting a lot of requests to put memorial plaques on benches and things like that. And we felt that it was necessary to have a policy with respect to memorials on the green. I think a lot of the sentiment was, is we didn't want the green to turn into a memorial park, so to speak. So we put together a proposal, which was then vetted with the selectmen and the town lawyer and with a lot of modifications to that. And we came up with a policy that the Guilford Green Committee approved of. And now it's time for the selectmen to take a look at that. And the main, the main criteria, I would say, were donations of memorials, were that, that, let's see, it's under section three, I believe. And that, basically, it has to do with the fact that the memorials have to be of historical, either national significance or local significance, and not primarily for private individuals putting memorials or plaques on the green. So that, that's, that was the basic issue that we had needed. And then we have criteria in terms of what the donor has to do if they're approved for a memorial.
Okay, I'll, I'll move this, you know, for, I'll, I'll move it, but I do have some discussion.
Is, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Jerry, how does this coordinate or fit into Park and Recs? I know they have similar issues and policies. How does this fit into, or does it fit in, or, I don't want it to supersede Park and Recs' plans so that we have conflict between the two?
Right, thank you for that question. That issue came up fairly recently, where there was a request for a memorial from Ms. Balastresi, to have a memorial for Carl Balastresi. And we talked about it at the Green Committee with, with Rick. And he said that it was okay with the Park and Rec Commission if the memorial was placed on another park within Guilford, but not on the green. So in some sense, there are other places where memorials can be put, sometimes on other parks other than the green. And also, the library has memorial bricks that they put on a pathway there, and that's another option for people who would like a memorial.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I wasn't as concerned about, and I think that's a good idea about national or local significance versus individual. That's a good point. The point of, the question I had though was, is there any way that this, does this policy fit in, other than that individual issue, fit into Park and Rec's policy on their parks?
Quite finally, I'm not familiar with Park and Rec's policy with respect to memorials, and it seems to me that that was left up to the Park and Rec Commission to decide.
Okay. So you don't think there's anything that's going to interfere with Park and Rec? If we put this policy in, it isn't going to be a big conflict of any sort?
Well, this, this is very specific to the town green.
Right, okay. I understand that. I just want to be consistent, that's all. As far, you know, I know the difference between individuals and local historic, I was just thinking of size, shape and purpose and that type of thing, because that was going to lead to my next point was, I don't know, it's a little bit of micromanaging, because the bottom line is, this policy says that the Board of Selectmen has the final say and discretion. But I was just thinking about size, I didn't see any mention about size. It's got some materials and that, that type of thing, but I'm thinking years from now, you know, some, I don't know, I, like I said, I don't want to micromanage, but I didn't see anything in there specific to size. That would be the only other thing I could see other than that. I, I think having the Board of Selectmen, you know, is fine.
Yeah.
May I just say one thing?
Yes.
Just to get back to Charles' original point, on the top of the first page of this, it says, policy should only apply to town green, parentheses, Park and Recreation has its own policies regarding areas under its control. So does that? has its own policies regarding areas under its control." So does that separate?
Yeah, it covers it. I, I just wanted to, you know, again, going back to Gary's point about committees and commissions, all going down the same path. So, you know, if, if the Board of Selectmen twenty years from now decides a neon green monument to some national figure is a good thing, I, I, I don't think that would be coordinated necessarily with Park and Rec. So that, that's the only point I was making. I understand that they are two separate things, but I think that's a little bit of the point I'm making is that, do these two separate things conflict with each other? I, I, I'm overdoing it, I suppose, but that's the only point trying to make.
And, and Jerry, just as far as your committee is concerned, the distinction between memorials and things like benches, you know, putting a World War II memorial there is a little bit different than a bench that carries, you know, beloved teacher Don Papa on the green. Your, what's the distinction here? And?
Well, the major distinction is now that it has to be either national or local historical significance. And, you know, so people who want to put a plaque memorializing a family member wouldn't be included in that policy.
Okay. However, we would be able to acknowledge a donor. Let's say, and we've had this conversation in the past, or at least I've had it with a couple of folks, about the possibility of more benches on the green, particularly owing to the popularity of the green over the last six to, six to seven months. If we were to add additional benches to the, to the green, would the donors be able to acknowledge a family member, say, you know, donated by Peter Barrett in, in memory of his mother, that kind of thing? He's splitting hairs here, but.
I, I would say under the existing policy, that would not be allowed.
Okay.
They can donate, they can donate a bench, but.
Right.
Not without.
Yeah. Okay. So in that light, could they, could a sign on a new bench simply say donated by the Peter Barrett family?
I think they're, under the rules for donations, then the, the matter of the size and, and the writing on the plaque has to be approved of also through the, both the Green Committee and the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. The question I have though is a, a sign slash plaque stating that some approved thing was donated by such and such, is that potentially okay under this policy? And needless to say, the thing that comes to my mind are the lights on the green.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, I would say no.
Well, the three, three dot three says, "Subject to existing policy, laws, and regulations, the Board of Selectmen may consider donor requests to place a small donor recognition plaque on donations. The size of the donor recognition plaque shall be determined by the Board of Selectmen in its sole discretion." So.
Yeah. But doesn't that conflict, that statement conflict with what Jerry just said?
I think to a minor degree, yes. Well, I, I don't know. One, one can try to say that a bench is not a monument.
Well, that was my original question.
The way around it. The point is, is that are we going to allow dedicated by plaques on the green?
Well.
On any, on any approved thing. Let's say, first of all, whatever it is, is approved. You know, are we potentially, or opening ourselves up for discussion, going to allow dedicated by signs?
I think, I think three dot three explicitly says yes. Now, Jerry just went back to my original question, distinction between a pension and a memorial. A memorial is like the statue in the middle of the green or in the World War II thing.
Right. It's built.
So, so we're back to that same question, the distinction. And it seems as if Jerry was starting to lean towards, it may be different if it's a bench. I don't want to put words in your mouth, Jerry, but.
Well, well, I would say that if the donor of a bench wants to be recognized as the donor, which I think you're talking about, Charles, then, then I think it might be up to the Board of Selectmen and, and you'll get a recommendation from the Green Committee. But if it says in memory of, then it's more like, not quite the same as saying it was donated by. And what I think we were concerned about is having a lot of these things in memory of a particular person.
Yeah. I, I understand that distinction. I just, you know, I, I want the five of us to understand that if we approve this policy, then putting signs someplace on an approved thing that says donated by is within our discretion?
I think the policy allows for that because it is the discretion of the Board of Selectmen to, to put what we want on there regardless. That we've adopted a policy which we can either adhere to or, or circumvent if the situation dictates.
Exactly. In the policy, our only options would be to explicitly allow it, to explicitly forbid it, or to say it's subject to judgment. And I, I think we have to go with the way the policy is written.
It reads, I agree.
I, I do have another question, something that doesn't seem to be addressed. And I'm wondering if the Green Committee considered this, would be removal of a monument or a statue. There is, I mean, it's kind of an, I know, it's an elephant in the room. Maybe it's just the trunk in the room. But it's, there is mention of being able to relocate a monument on the green, but not moving something off of the green. Was that a topic of discussion?
Well, I, so it's interesting. I did have, I did get some calls around the Floyd death, the Black Lives Matter stuff about removing the, the statue on the green. I did have to point out to somebody that that was a Union soldier and not a Confederate soldier. Jerry is laughing because he had, he had similar correspondence with, with, with folks that we were both copied on. And you're right. What, what, is there, is there a rationale, you know, we can make one up, is there a rationale for us ever having to take a, a monument off the green? Now, the, the, the established monuments are all virtually World War, they're, they're war related, if I'm not mistaken, right? So, I don't know, Jerry, any, any, any discussion among the committee on contemplation of removal?
Jerry, you're muted.
I'm muted because of all the noise going on here. Maybe you can hear it too. It, it was, if, if a monument is damaged, then it, it either is the responsibility of the donor to do something about it, or the town can opt to do something about it. So I think, I think that's covered in the, in the policy. I mean, obviously, it's probably not going to be any of the war memorials. And it's kind of doubtful that if it's of historical significance and so forth, that it would be asked to be removed. The only, the only circumstance that I can think of is it's damaged in some way.
But I think, Sue, you're referring to a political issue.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. If suddenly someone said, well, the North had, you know, the North had enslaved people and we don't like even having a Union soldier on the green, that kind of thing.
Right. Or some situation that we can't even contemplate right now.
Right.
It is coming. So.
But that's, I think, maybe beyond the Green Committee at this point, because that would, that's like sort of a philosophical issue more than just deciding to move the World War II thing from the South End to the North End. I don't know, Matt. I don't know what you think. I mean, that might need another policy that's not the Green Committee, I guess.
Pretty major.
Yeah. I'm on this because you, it's, it's an excellent point and it's potentially fraught with all sorts of, of complications that may or may not be possible to distill down to a prospective policy. Okay. In other words, to a certain extent, some common sense must prevail. Now, common sense obviously changes from year to year and decade to decade, or I suspect Princeton wouldn't be dealing with, whether Woodrow Wilson's got to come down from buildings, right? So things change as times change. But, but to just sort of stretch an analogy a little bit, I was reading a story about the CEO of General Motors, Mary Barra, and, and they had apparently like a fourteen-page dress code, and she boiled it down to dress appropriately, right? So to a certain extent, this board and future boards have to have some ability to evaluate what makes sense in the context of that community at that time. And, and so we need some planning, but we need some flexibility too. And thanks, Jerry and everybody else working on this thing. But that's, to me, is the goal, like boundaries, because we don't want every single, I mean, to me, the green is, 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 is critically important to the community and what goes there should be critically important to the community. And we don't want to trivialize it by small transient items. On the other hand, we need some flexibility at some point to pull things out. I don't know. I'm.
I have to agree with. I have to agree with Lou that there's no question that, you know, we can't dream up what could happen in the future. And I think the fact that the Board of Selectmen, whoever they be, elected, you know, twenty years from now, have the final discretion, is, is more than enough regulation right now, because we can't anticipate what could potentially come up twenty years from now. So I, I think that, you know, we could sit here for next two weeks trying to come up with something and it's not going to matter twenty years from now. So I think the fact that the highest elected board in the town governs and has the final decision, and that's spelled out repeatedly in this document, so I'm okay moving it. I think I already moved it, didn't I?
Yeah, you did. It's been moved a second. All right. Charles, I, I, I think you're saying call the question?
Yes. Boy, somehow these Zoom meetings just go on and on.
Yeah, Matt, you promised a quick one.
Yeah. All right. Call the questions. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haberta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectman, uh, Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Motion carries. Jerry, thank you very much for your time and your work on behalf of the community.
Thank you.
And new item eight, appointments and resignations. It that one is discuss and take possible action on the appointment of Sonia Moreno as Health Director for a four-year term. Just as a way of a little bit of background, the state actually requires the appointment, designation and appointment of the Health Director as part of state statutes. And it is to be done every four years, which is something that I did not realize. I'm not sure whether we had been regularly reappointing Dennis.
I do remember, I do remember doing it before. So I don't know how far back, but.
Right. Well, Sonia is on board and with us. So this is sort of checking the box with the state. And we need to officially appoint her, even though she's been hired into that position. So.
Is there any chance of getting, are you going to move it or?
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move it for, for discussion purposes. I'll move it. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Comments or questions, Charles?
I, I assume, you know, everything is great and I haven't, I haven't met her. I was just wondering if it was possible to get her resume, just so we know what we can know.
Um, yeah, Tracy, let's make sure that that gets sent out. I will, I will tell you a couple of things. First, she came highly recommended. All of her references were outstanding. She was formerly the, actually, Charles, I think in the packet, we've got her, some of, some of her credentials from Southern Connecticut in terms of her, 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 her curriculum, or CV on her respective masters and undergrad programs. But we'll get a copy of her resume as well. I will say this, it was about a week and a half after we, I, we hired her, I got an unsolicited call from Noel Bishop, who I think some of you may know, first selectman in, in Westbrook, who is also related to the Bishop family here in, in Guilford. He's been the first selectman for thirteen years in, in Westbrook. And he called specifically to tell me that in his thirteen years as first selectman in the town of Westbrook, Sonia Moreno was the single best hire he ever made. And he was disappointed to have lost her because she made a, a career move to go to a larger municipality, a bigger municipality, and she subsequently determined that she was not happy there. So of late, she was the part-time Health Director for the town of Killingworth, as well as the, the Middlesex Consortium for, for Middlesex Health District. So she had two part-time jobs. But she's hit the ground running. We have, we're fortunate to have a two-week overlap with Dennis, where she was here three days the first week and then was working side by side with Dennis on a daily basis. She has continued to do some of the things. She provides daily updates to me and to our emergency services personnel related to COVID cases. She's, she was actively involved with the high school with the case they had there. Their, you know, rumors are probably floating around town. There's, the end of last week, there was potentially a, a youth sports coach who is contact, who was, who was confirmed positive. She's working very closely with the contact tracer that we hired as part of the grant that we got. So she's, she's hit the ground running. But we'll be happy.
Yeah, I had no issue and, and I appreciate your, your background. Yeah, I have no issue that, you know, you, she was vetted properly and everything is wonderful. It's just that all of these things you just said, I didn't know when I was being asked to approve this person. So.
Yep.
That's good. Okay. Yeah. You even already moved it. You've moved it and I've.
I moved this bench second. So any, any other discussion or comments? Call the questions. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haberta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Thank you very much. If we would, I'd like to add item number nine, number nine to the agenda. And that is an application to place a sign on the green by the Guilford Arts Center for the date of the, for the event. Sign placement for October twelfth through the twenty-sixth.
For what event?
Uh, for Artistry 2020.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Second, you got it.
Discussion. Call the questions. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haberta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is an aye. Now to the, adding the sign itself, is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second. Call the question. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haberta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Okay. So number ten, correspondence. Not sure we have anything under correspondence. I did not. Anyone else? Hearing none. Committee reports, which would be eleven. Lou?
We are in the stretch run, working with Janice and Pete to finish off the language for the ordinance for the Town Hall South. Build, you know, expenses, charges that, that people need to deal with when they, when they go in for various applications.
These, these are the land, the respective land use departments at the building, which we've already taken care of.
Right.
Cool. All right. Sandy, anything on the housing?
Um, no. No, not at the moment. The Public Works did do some of the brush clearing. They had gotten a little behind only because of the two storms, but they've managed to, to do that. And the reason that it seems like it's taking forever is that the, the not-for-profit developer has to, as part of this whole thing, apply and secure funding from the state of Connecticut. So that's, that's what's, we're waiting on right now.
Got it. Okay. Anybody have anything under old business? New business?
I don't. It's on the agenda for new business.
Pardon me?
There's two items on, on my board pack.
For new business?
Talked about this cold plasma generators? Did we, did we move that forward?
All right.
That's Steve's, Steve's item, Matt.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Okay. Is Steve on?
Steve is on.
Steve?
Hello?
Steve, you're there. Go ahead.
I'm here.
Is it just a coincidence, before you get started, that this is literally 99.4%, which was that old commercial for diesel, I think? I mean, that's just too funny for words.
Earl Shy, paint your car, $99.99.
I had an Earl Shy paint job.
That's right. Steve, you want to talk, you want to talk a little bit about this project, please?
Yes.
Go on.
Yeah, you were on there. You're fine.
You are muted.
You're going to have to turn your phone off completely.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, Steve. You?
I am well. Due to this COVID-19, you know, we're trying to keep the building safe. I came across a new product, which is this coal plasma generator, and I am proposing to install them in all the air handlers in the town-owned buildings. They will kill mold, mildew, SARS, COVID-19 up to 99.4%. So with this, I am proposing the town purchase the products to install, and I've got another person who would come in and install them all, which this is all he does, is install these phenomenal air products. So he knows what he's doing. So I am proposing for $33,714 to install these in all the town-owned air handlers.
All the town-owned, which buildings are we talking about?
We're talking about the Town Hall, Town Hall South, Community Center, Police Department, Youth and Family Services, Social Services, Public Works, Food Bank, and the library.
Wow, okay. I didn't realize it was that vast. That's a pretty good price for all that.
Yes.
And that performance. My guess is, well, I'm a guess, I'm curious what the maintenance schedule is for these things. Do they have to be checked monthly, weekly? Does somebody have to go and replace filters? Are these things killing?
There's nothing, there's nothing you really have to service, other than clean them. You should clean them once, if not twice, a year.
And who does?
Other than that, they're supposed to last 10 or 15 years, easy.
Who does the cleaning?
That would be my department. Or we could hire the HVAC contractor to do it.
Okay. What does cleaning entail?
It's like electrodes in between the air filter and the air handler fan. You just need to wipe down these electrodes, you know, once or twice a year to make sure they're clean and efficient.
Okay, but are employees doing that? And I just think, I mean, it's supposed to be quote-unquote killing all of these viruses and diseases and everything, and are they dead at that point? Is it okay to be doing it?
Yes.
You know?
It kills 99.4%. It comes back, it goes through the filter. At that point, they're dead. I mean, it's not worse than changing a filter now.
Clean up or something like that.
Worse than changing a filter now. That's a good point. Right now, a filter's got whatever particulates are on there, and all these bugs are accumulating on that stuff.
Correct. And it's as simple as that type of thing, not like an asbestos cleanup or something.
No, not at all.
And how does somebody measure this performance?
They went out to a third party, which I think I included in the package. There was a third-party testing. And after, I don't think I have it with me, but after 30 minutes, it kills 86%. After an hour, I think it kills 99.4. And after several hours, it kills like 99.9% of everything.
Have we had any recommendations of other people that have installed these and used them, or is it just too soon?
It's just too soon. As you can see, that third-party testing was done like a month ago. You know, this all.
It's all new.
This product's been out, but it just recently got tested for the COVID specifically.
So back to the maintenance, Steve, the contracts with HVAC maintenance for the, you know, heating and cooling, this is separate, so that whatever company's doing that now is not involved with this. As you said, it would either be handled by town employees or a separate.
Or I can start putting it into their contracts.
And then this is just, is this something, Matt, that, is this something that, like, say, it would be nice to share this information, that the research that Steve did with, like, churches and other buildings that are going to, that are trying to have people in them? And this is, I mean, this doesn't seem that expensive.
I know.
Right, well, Pete is going to shake his head and say no, because we do not recommend any products to anybody in the community as a general rule for liability. Private conversations, perhaps, you know, we've done this, or we can certainly publicize it, but we are not going to be making any specific recommendations relative to how to treat the COVID virus on people's air handling systems. I appreciate the sentiments, Sandy, but Pam has drilled into my head before, over the three years before leaving, that we do not do things like make those kind of recommendations regarding specific products or services.
Okay.
Here's a thought about this. I wouldn't want to be having a sort of a knee-jerk reaction to a brand-new product that's just come out. What we have here is a press release from, I guess, the manufacturer, from the end of the process, saying, ta-da, we're effective, and nobody else has done this. And it is a $33,000 expenditure.
It is not a brand-new product. The testing was brand-new.
Understood.
Specifically for the.
I understand.
But it's been out for 10, 10 years, and it's been fully working for 10 years without any problems. I'll think the products will go probably 15 years without having to be.
I understand that. It's the, we're doing it now because of COVID. I assume we're not doing it for the other reasons.
I mean, it would be good anyways, I mean, to protect from the regular flu and mold and, you know, any bacteria. You know, we can clean all the surfaces all we want, but unless we're cleaning the air that's being blown around us.
Right.
We're not doing a full job.
If we had a need for it previously, it would have been included in a capital expenditure request. So it was not on our radar previously, and now we're doing it because of COVID. And, you know, as important to me as to anybody here, to keep our employees and the public safe, but I have a bit of a knee-jerk reaction, and it is a lot of money. Would this, Matt, would this be reimbursable?
This is potentially reimbursable through COVID. We would definitely apply for reimbursement for it. This isn't as much, this is similar to the cleaning supplies that we use. So the logic suggests that this would be potentially reimbursable by either the FEMA or by the CARES Act money that the state has.
Where would the money be coming from at this point in time? You know, you're saying it's a maintenance thing, it's not a capital thing?
It's, obviously, it's a capital purchase of the devices themselves. The installation is, you know, that's a service, that's a service kind of. Mary Jane and Steve, you want to talk about where you find the funding?
Well, on the assumption that it is a COVID-related expenditure, it will be applied to our COVID expenditure line items in the hopes of being reimbursed. So that's just, you know, purely an accounting issue. What would come into play if, once we go through all the FEMA and state funding, there is bound to be a balance left over of items that may not have been approved. At such point, we will, we will need to, you know, find funding for those items then, whether fund balance or within our regular budgets. But it will be applied to the COVID expenditures at this point.
And to that point, Mary Jane and I have been having some discussions about the anticipated size of our surplus, which is going to be pretty significant coming off of the 2020 budget year. And one of the, one of my ideas is to establish a COVID fund from, with some of the proceeds from the, from the surplus, to potentially cover any COVID-related expenses that were not reimbursed by either FEMA or by the CARES Act.
My sense of this is, I would, it's the measuring metric that concerns me a little bit. I mean, because the cost versus saving two or three or five people being sick would be worth it, right? One person out of work for a month is going to cost a ton of money, and 10 people is, you know, you can get crazy. So if the thing is truly effective, this is, it seems to me roughly inappropriate. But I have, I have a slight similar concern to what Sue's expressing, is how do we, how do we measure it? I mean, how do, how do we know?
Another factor, my understanding is that these go in the ducts. It's only working when the HVAC system is working, right? So if we've got, so if we're working with windows, this time of year with windows open now to improve ventilation, the machinery is not operating.
The machine operates during all occupied hours of the town.
So how does the air?
They have to. It's a, it's a commercial building.
So air circulating even when HVAC is not on?
Correct. The fans run.
Yes.
Yes, they have to. We're sucking in more fresh air now than, than normal due to COVID.
I hate to throw a wrench in the works, because I like the idea, and I do think it's important to address the things, but whatever phenomenal air with a verified stamp on the top of it is, is not giving me the warm and fuzzies. It may be perfectly fine, and I, and you've done a ton of work, and we appreciate it. I appreciate it. If there's any way of getting some, somebody to kind of validate this a little bit better, I'd feel a little bit better.
Or another town or other users that have used it, are using it.
Or numbers. I mean, they have, they have like these black cubes on this thing. Here's what we do. I mean, it's just mysterious. I don't know how they're going to measure microbes saved or killed. I just don't get it. I mean, I guess, yeah, yeah. Sorry. I would, I could do it if I.
I'm going to quibble with that. So this is a proven technology that's been around for years as a supplement to air handling systems.
Okay.
Steve has indicated that it has just been tested, this methodology's been tested for COVID. Is there any data that, who tested it?
That's a third-party tester. That's why I say, and that's why I sent it out to everybody. They didn't test it themselves, they sent it out to a testing lab, and that's where they came up with those numbers.
Lou, what makes you feel more comfortable? Going out and doing more research, finding other manufacturers do the same thing, finding testimonials? What is it that you need to be convinced that this is the appropriate thing to do for our employees?
Yeah, that's the appropriate question. I mean, listen, I'm immediately balancing off the expense of half of what I'm going to say, you know? It'd be nice to hear, it'd be nice to hear an environmental engineer come in and say, here's how this works, here's why it works, and there's a reasonable insurance. Now, you know, are we going to pay somebody to do that? I don't know. But that's the kind of thing, just sort of an expert that has got credibility, and we can poke some of these questions at to pin that down. I mean, and maybe it is completely there, but I mean, I certainly wouldn't want to do something that turns out to be not effective for a reason we can't anticipate.
Or even to see that other municipalities are looking at it. But just based on Googling, I'm not seeing anybody else looking at this.
Doesn't have a track record at this point, that's for sure.
All right, well, obviously, there's a level of discomfort here that I'm not sure many of us predicted. But Steve, we'll work, we'll work with these folks to get some tests, to get some customer testimonials, all right? Who is installed, that where has been installed. We'll reach out to CCM and see if CCM has had, if they can do a quick survey to find out if any other municipalities are doing it.
Well, and ask the, ask the company if they've got any, any other customers, and, you know, they don't have, it's a national issue, so, you know, you would think that somewhere somebody is doing this, so.
And if you are going to be going back for more information, it might be a good time to find out. The pricing on the installation, it's all over the place. I mean, the low vendor is at $175 per unit.
That's because the upper two have never installed them before, so it's a whole learning curve. The one guy who priced it out the cheapest, that's all he does. He does all climate control stuff, particularly these phenomenal air units. So he knows exactly what he's up against.
Does he have other customers? He must have other customers then. If that's all he does, you know, who does he do it for?
I can find out.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else? So we're going to table this? Is there?
Well, one other thing, Matt, when you summed it up on how to get further information, you didn't include Lou's suggestion of an environmental engineer, which is going to be the most expensive route to go. And I didn't know whether.
I have no intention of layering on an additional layer of cost to this project, particularly given the concern that's been expressed about spending $33,000.
Right, I was trying to answer your question, Matt. I mean, that doesn't.
I didn't think so. I didn't think you.
I was ready to vote yes on it today, so I'm not necessarily looking for an environmental engineer. I just wanted to see where that was going.
Yeah.
I appreciate all the work that went into this.
Absolutely, thanks. I feel like we're stepping on your toes.
Yeah.
And I think I'm going to speak for everybody here. This is not a lack of concern for the health and safety of our employees. This is obviously a concern for the efficacy of the system and the technology. So the question, we're questioning the veracity of the, of the methodology at the cost, not a disregard for the health and well-being of our employees.
Exactly. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to table?
I'm on it.
Second?
Second.
Call the questions. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haberta.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Rua.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. The motion carries. Thank you. Steve, we'll put our heads together about specifically what kind of information we're going to pull, pull together.
Very good.
Good. Thank you, Steve. All right, anything else on our new business?
Yeah, I don't know if new business or not. I just wanted to make a quick comment. I saw Mary Jane's article in the newspaper, and I thought it was very informative, letting our taxpayers know where the town stands financially, sort of. But I did want to make one point of that article. Again, I thought it was very good and very informative. Mary Jane made one comment about revenue in particular to park and rec, how there, if I, I don't have in front of me, but basically what she was saying is because park and rec revenue is down, future programs, whether this year or next year, are potentially jeopardized or at least have to be looked at. And the only point I want to make is maybe we, as a board, when we're looking at the budget indoor, if there's a particular program, if there would be some creative way to float any jeopardized park and rec program. I'm talking about that program fund that they use to keep programs going. I just think that, I know they took a hit with revenue this year, but I think going forward and coming out of this pandemic for the physical and mental well-being of our taxpayers, if we could keep as many programs, whether they be concerts on the greens or whatever, to help park and rec get us back to normal when it's appropriate, if there was some way for the town to float or do whatever to support their reduced revenue, I think it's something we should look at going forward, because I think that investment would be valuable in getting us back to normal as soon as we can.
Charles, I would, I would agree. It's, it is the program funds that are down. Also, our expenses are down, but it's, it's the excess that they've made over and above the cost to run their various programs. And as you may recall, we dipped into that fund, you know, we have, we have drawn down on that over the last several years. on that over the last several years. It used to be close to half a million dollars in that fund. Uh, in fact, uh, we, we drew down on it for the pickleball courts this year for capital projects. We also, we also took a contribution out of that to offset some salaries, some increased salary costs this year.
I understand that.
Any anticipation, Charles?
Go ahead.
Anticipation was we would be able to continue to do that for a while. I think, uh, going into the next budget season, that is a, you know, it's down to about 100, $150,000 and they're not com- the board is not comfortable keeping it, uh, going much below that at this point. And to your point, yes, we will, we will float, uh, we will float, uh, until such time as, uh, programs get restored and they can start to contribute to that.
Okay. Cause that was the point that Mary Jane made, that, you know, some, some programs might be jeopardized because of the lack of revenue. And I just wanted to, uh, to point out to this board, if there's a way to support those programs going forward, I, I think they would be valuable.
Right. Uh, Mary Jane?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. First of all, it is not Mary Jane's article. It is an article that was written by the newspaper.
Very good. I was complimenting you.
Well, I, you know, I like to stay out of the paper as much as possible. So I'm not a politician. I don't need to be in the paper. Um, it's not my article. It was written based on the minutes of the meeting and some comments from me. And as far as the park and rec issue, I specifically asked the reporter to get that information directly from Rick, um, because I did not have all of the.
You did a great job.
I just want to make it clear that.
No, no, I thought it was really good for the taxpayers to, to get that kind of information and you, and you gave it the article a lot of credibility and I, I thought you did a great job.
Well, I, I appreciate that, but I do not like to read my name in the paper, but my mother does.
Well, she would have been proud with that one.
Yeah. Well, I, I appreciate that, but I just wanted to just make those couple of comments.
Let me just make an observation though, that to Charlie's point, it's helpful for people to see what's going on. They, they, they have the opportunity on these meetings. I know some people do because we hear from them. It is, it is nonetheless a useful thing to distribute some of the information that we sort of get frequently and can sometimes take for granted. So different ways of creatively sharing our, uh, information pool are, are, are helpful. They're just.
Well, and I, and I think it makes people appreciate that sometimes we have to make unpopular decisions or, or decisions that people question. And, and the reason that we do that is, is to maintain the financial health, uh, and wellbeing of the taxpayers. And, you know, it's real. I mean, we're in good shape. So we're doing okay through this, but, you know, not every community is, is in the same boat.
Right.
I think what we need to remember though, which is I'm, I think this is based on what Mary Jane is saying, that article is written by a reporter who is any reporter who is putting, listening to a tape. And I guess he did follow up with you, Mary Jane, and call you, but it's his or the paper's spin on how they report it. I mean, it, it works to our benefit, but the town didn't submit that article. That was the reporter just reporting, you know?
This is really going off on the table.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and I, and I have need to do other things. So.
Okay. Can I ask a, just a quick, uh, other sort of side question? You mentioned the pickleball courts. Is that what those aluminum structures are? Like the building up at Guilford Lakes next to the tennis court? Is that a pickleball? What is that?
Oh, those are tents that are being, those are permanent tents that are being built at each of the schools to accommodate outdoor classrooms and recreation.
As the weather turns a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah. That was our guess one, but when you mentioned pickleball, I was kind of curious.
Now, pickleball.
Very nice. It went up instantaneously.
The pickleball courts are now going to be built up at Bitner. Um, Sue?
Can I ask very quickly, now that October 1st has passed, do we have any feel yet for whether we were made whole on the tax collections?
Yeah, Mary Jane and I were talking about that Friday. There was about a little over 6 million that came in, in, um, uh, in September. And if you do the math, uh, we were about 10% down at that point. Um, and it looks, look, we don't have the final number because we're going to run that today. Um, but it looks like we're probably going to be whole, if not, uh, I, I believe it looks like we're going to be pretty close to whole.
Great.
Yeah, Sue, I actually, I ran those numbers and I kind of extrapolated, you know, equalizing the grand list. Um, so at the end of September, I think we were closer to about 6% down from the prior year. And of course, October 1st was the last day to pay your taxes. And we know we have those people out there that wait until that, that moment. So, um, we, we did, we did very well in.
Thank you. Great. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, anything else? Public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
And a second. That one we do by voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks all.
Thank you.